If I may have your attention, please. I'd like to call the work session for June the 4th, 2024 to order. We have a couple of things that we want to talk about and hear about. And the first one is that we're honored to have the Valley Rescue Mission with us. Mike, if you will make your way to the podium over there and tell us how things have gone this past year. Can you all believe it's been a year since we've been working with this? It's gone really fast.
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. Yes, it's hard to believe it's been a year. In fact, I was looking back through our notes. January 23rd was when some of you came last year in '23 to visit. And then in April of that same year, we came over here and met with certain members of the council and the mayor and police and others and started talking about a concept of whether we could make this work. And then July 18th of 2023 was when the agreement was finally signed, agreement with the Valley Rescue Mission and the city. So here we are almost a year later. I want you to hear from your prized man here, and that's Captain. I will tell you, this relationship would not be where it is today if it were not for Captain and Don Harbuck, who almost are on the phone every day, talking about issues, what's working, what's not working, how can we improve it. I think you have invited, Don has come over and met with all the city police a couple of times just to talk about what we're doing and why we're trying to do that. So it's a relationship, and that's the way we look at it. You've got a list that will show you the folks who have been in our program. And I remember, Councilman Eddie, you said, "We don't want you to change what the Valley Rescue Mission does as far as treating people the way you do, how you go about doing what you do and so forth." And I'm here a year later to tell you, anybody that comes from Opalika is treated just as everyone else is treated when they come to the Valley Rescue Mission. We've had some people that wanted to, one guy wanted to go live with his girlfriend. We don't do that. We've had a couple of people decide they want to continue, try to use drugs. We don't do that. In fact, the first person that came, he was in our homeless program, very nice guy. But after two weeks, it was obvious he did not want to get a job. He did not want to go to work. He just wanted to lay around and eat three meals a day. That is not what we do. If you're in our homeless program, we're going to help you get a job and you're going to be out there and do it. So there's an example of, we have worked together to try to make it a win-win. The bottom line is, for the men and women who are transported over there, they're God's children. And we're going to do everything possible to help them. That may mean we even recommend that they go to another organization because they have physical issues, they have a lot of medical issues, and we're not a medical facility. But rather than saying that you don't fit, we work with them and help them get to where they need to be. So that's an example of, I think, why the mayor first thought and Eddie first thought, let's see if we can find a relationship that works. And we'll work at it. And Captain Amerson and Don Harbuck are working at it to make it work. So I would really like, I'll answer any questions. I did pass out a sheet for you so that you can see, what are the things we do when someone gets there? Some of these folks don't have a birth certificate. Some of them don't have proper ID. Some of them have no idea about their social security card, et cetera, et cetera. And then as you look on down through all the various services of what we're trying to do, I'll even tell you, we had a pregnant lady that was eight months pregnant. She came to our facility. She had nobody to go with her when it was time to deliver the baby. So one of our staff went into the delivery room and helped her and was there while she delivered her baby. Now, that's not on the list anywhere, but that's the kind of thing you do. We are there to help these folks any way we possibly can, and we're trying to do that. But Captain, I'd like for you to speak because you're the reason that we're here. Thank you.
One of the things I can say about this program, me and Chief Healy talks all the time about when dealing with our citizens, we need to make sure that they have skin in the game. That means they have to be able to go into a situation and do some things for themselves. I think Valley Rescue Mission, as you can see, the list of people that's on the list and all the things that they bring to our, bring to the organization, that if you go to Valley Rescue Mission, you're going to have to do some work. And that's something that we proud ourselves of, making sure that when we do, when we do a assessment of these homeless people, that we make sure they understand that they're going to have to do some type of work. The process is pretty simple. If our officers are out there patrolling and they run across somebody that needs some assistance that are homeless, it's easy. They get a warrant check ran on them, which is pretty simple. There's a short survey, questions that they have to answer. And then it's pretty much, if they pass everything, then we make sure that they get to Valley Rescue Mission. And like Don said, we always make sure that they're taken care of from the time we pick them up and to the time we get them there. And our focus on, our real focus is getting them back to Opalika so hopefully they can start a job here. I mean, that's one of the things that Mayor Fuller constantly said, that once they get through with the program, they always can come back here. We have had no problems at all in reference to working out any issues that we may have with the Valley Rescue Mission. I mean, it's like real-time information. If I have a problem, all I have to do is call Mike or Don, and they quickly answer any question I have, whether it's about pay or anything of that sort. We just work together and try to take care of it as quick as possible. At this time, do the council have any words for me?
Captain, it is a voluntary program. I have a three to go. We don't force anybody to go.
No, we don't force anybody to go. Like I said, if the officer runs across somebody, and a lot of times, somebody in the community might call me and say, "Hey, Captain Amerson, we have this person that may fit the Valley Rescue Program." And they'll give me their number, I'll call them. And I'll be honest with you, sometime it's not, they don't go the first time, they don't go the second time, they don't go the third, they don't go the fourth. Sometimes it's a sixth time. What you got to understand with homeless, they have to be ready. You can't make them ready. So Mayor Fuller, when they get ready, I make sure that they have a way down there so they can start their treatment program, whatever the treatment may be. Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. President, I'd just like to say, for you gentlemen, I know that a lot of what you do may feel like a thankless task or a thankless job at times. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for what you do for our citizens. It is a, it is a big task that we have been trying to figure out solutions to tackle. And thanks to the mayor and administration for having the foresight to do this. I think this is a good program going future that we can build on. So thank you.
One other question. Once a person decided that they passed all of the pre-qualifications and they decide after maybe two weeks that they, this is not for them, you do not force them to stay, right?
No, no, everything.
But if they decide again that they want to go, will you accept them as a client a second or third time?
Yeah, trust me, working with Valley Rescue Mission, working with Mike and Don, we've pretty much experienced pretty much everything. And we have had several that went there, wasn't ready. Like I said earlier, it's not the first time, the second time, the third time, it's the fourth or the fifth time. They have to, most time, have to be in some type of crisis, some type of trauma. So therefore, they decide that they really need help. You can't force them. So me and Don and Mike, we talk about it, we understand. If they're not ready, we can't make them get ready. But we have to afford them an opportunity to get ready. Anybody else?
So following up on George's, the repeat customer?
Yeah.
Do you do more work with them before you take them over to Columbus to try to make sure that, you know, this time that they're going to stay and that they're committed to getting well?
Unfortunately, because we're dealing with our patrol officers and they're dealing with calls of service, so a lot of times, we don't have the time to spend that much time with them. But one thing that is to our advantage, under the Together Opalika umbrella, we do a lot of work with a lot of other nonprofits in the area. So if we can't help them, then we'll give the information to like a Jean Kazi or somebody right there, Tom Tippett, and they'll help us maybe house them for a couple of days until they get ready. I had one lady, it took her two months before she decided that she was actually ready to go to Valley Rescue Mission.
Really?
And one thing you got to look at, one thing that I'm finding out with dealing with a lot of the homeless, a lot of them actually working, a lot of them working at Burger King and different places, they just do not make enough money to purchase a home. Or they may be on social security, they may be elderly. I think we have some more elderly people down there than pretty much anybody. So it's a process. Unfortunately, a lot of times, they have to fail several times before they get their mind right for the help.
Yeah, sure.
Anybody else?
I just wanted.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I was just going to say, now, in the addiction program, if they're court mandated, they're there. And if they walk out the door, we call the probation officer and say they've left the building. So that's a whole different scenario. They're free to leave, but if they leave, there will be a warrant for their arrest and so forth. So the addiction program is a lot different than what we're talking about with the homeless, but they're all free.
Sure.
And I'd like to add, one of the things I love about this program, a lot of citizens don't know, that our officers spend a lot of money out of their pockets trying to help the homeless. And with this program that Mayor Fuller, the council has allowed us to have, that don't happen that much. So we definitely need to give a round of applause to our officers that goes out and spend money out of their own pocket to help the citizens, because they do it all the time. And if you call them up here to try to give them a word for it, they won't take it. They will not take it because, you know, they feel like that's part of their duty.
Krudos to them. Thank you for letting us know about that. Others?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I hope our officers are not spending their money out of their pockets, but I can certainly see them doing that because they're trying to help our citizens. But, you know, that sounds like a great opportunity that maybe the council has here to provide some means to be able to support our officers in that effort if they are finding themselves out having to come out of their pocket. Perhaps there are some of those, some of those needs we can meet here as a city council. So if you'll bring those to the mayor or the city council, we would love to have opportunity to look at those. So because we don't, you know, we need their money to go to take care of their families, but we appreciate them doing that. I also wanted to thank the mayor as well as Valley Rescue. When this came before us, I was excited about it. One of the things that I have spoke about over and over again was issues with homelessness. And to have this being addressed, and I can tell there's a difference in the community already from it. I just really, really appreciate that. And thank you again for the list of all the things that you afford to those individuals that go. I love being able to go on social media, other networks, and I see people saying, "There's a homeless person here, there's a homeless person there." And I can go in there and say, "Hey, reach out to our Opalika Police Department." I mean, it has been tremendous. So I appreciate you all and the work that you do.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Let's see, we have a request to advertise for a public hearing. Matt?
Sir, good evening, councilmembers, mayor. Tonight, we have a request to advertise before you for the mill. This is 38 acres located at the old Pepperell Mill site, including some of the properties across First Avenue from it, or excuse me, 34.5 acres. The applicant is Hayes Eifert with Sanford Group, representing Sausage Investments LLC. You may remember about a year and a half, two years ago, the Holland Homes had brought before you a plan to rezone this to a master, a PUD and a master development plan. There were some snags along the way that got pulled. This is back in almost the exact same form with just a few updates. But again, the planning commission voted at their last meeting to send a positive recommendation with a seven to zero vote.
Well, Matt, did they, did they quit fighting?
They've worked out some sort of agreement as far as I know.
So the guy that's named that is on there, associate?
Sausage is, my understanding, still owns it at this time. There is an agreement in place to purchase the property, and I think that's pending some rezoning and other approvals.
Okay. All right, other questions?
Thank you.
Please proceed. Thank you. So we have some bids, Ms. Finley?
Good afternoon. We're asking the council to approve a contract for uniform cleaning. The bid opening date was May the 13th. The bid was mailed to two vendors, one bid was received. Recommend the contract be awarded to downtown cleaners on their sole bid meeting specifications.
I was wondering, Lily, can I, can I bring my laundry?
No, sir.
That's a pretty good deal there.
It is, yeah. We're asking the council to approve a contract for weed abatement services. The bid opening date was May the 20th. The bid was mailed to 16 vendors, one bid was received. Recommend the contract be awarded to Floatera on their sole bid meeting specifications.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
We're asking the council to approve a contract for McCoy Street Improvements. The bid opening date was May the 21st. The bid was mailed to 15 vendors, two bids were received. Recommend the bid be awarded to D and J Enterprises on their low bid meeting specifications in amount of $1,401,571.
Lily, what, may I ask what they, and maybe you got a picture or somewhere or something, what exactly are we going to do away with and what are we going to add? Here comes Scott to help you.
Yes, I'll let Scott explain that. Thank you.
So you're asking about the details of the project?
Yeah.
So this project is multi-phase, for main phase is going to add pedestrian multi-use facilities along McCoy Street from the apartments in Geneva Street all the way up to Columbus Parkway. That's the connectivity of the new residential areas to the library in downtown. Another part of this project will be to realign the intersection of McCoy and South Fox Run. If you know now, McCoy takes a hard right and Fox Run stops into it. Our studies have found that a lot, the majority of traffic is coming from Fox Run as the dominant roadway. So we're going to make that the through street all the way to Geneva and have McCoy stop. We're also going to add a second left turn lane at the signal at Geneva Street. Yeah, that's Geneva Street, yeah, at Geneva Street as well to help that heavy traffic that's coming through. And also, it's going to be, we're going to have some turn lanes and resurface the road from Geneva Street all the way to Columbus Parkway.
Well, I mean, I think it's a good deal. I think that that road has probably been underutilized for a long time.
It has been for the laning that it has. So we're utilizing some of the lanes for bike lane and turn lanes. And so we'll have plenty of capacity on that road, even though the population is growing with the apartments and townhouses and some subdivisions. And we foresee more coming on that area as well, that undeveloped property.
Any estimate on timeline?
Most of our projects are not a rush project. You know, it's just whenever the contractor, this contractor actually has two other current projects and one other awarded project with us right now. And so, you know, if it were a rush to beat school traffic or a rush to open up an event, we would certainly have a more strict timeline on it. But we're really flexible with that. We have a good relationship with the contractor that way. So I think we got a good price on the bid, you know, for that consideration too. So I would think they're going to start sometime this summer because once this is awarded, we'll give them a contract and we'll set the PO up and they'll, they can mobilize anytime they want to within the next two weeks. So it'll be for the next two weeks through summer when they'll be on site. That's the timeline you asked for, right?
Works.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
This is not related to McCoy Street, but any chance that that new signal can be installed on Marvin Parkway and Gateway before schools start packing off?
Yes, yes. That is something we will push. It's been a long time since they ordered the poles, and I don't think they have any other delays. So that's one thing we are going to push before school starts to get that one completed there. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to ask that follow-up question. You know, we get a lot of questions about that area.
Yeah, and I understand, absolutely. It is a busy area and that was a needed project. And unfortunately, shipping delays and manufacturing delays are big on the signals. So we're experiencing that, but it should be on schedule to go now.
Okay.
And once they get the lights up, they got to do two weeks of flashing?
Yeah, minimum two weeks, I think. So just get people acclimated for it. So we'll schedule that where it'll be there by August. I'll reach out to them for sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Gunnar, you have anything else that we need to talk about?
I do not.
Okay. Other council member? All right, we'll take a break and we'll start in six minutes. May I have your attention, please? I'd like to call the Opalika City Council Meeting of June the 4th, 2024 to order. Call roll, please, Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here.
Welcome back. Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here. We're honored to have Pastor Paul Dunbar from the First Baptist Church of Opalika. May I ask him to make his way to the podium? And he will lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by City Clerk Russell Jones. If you all would stand.
By God, we are humbled and grateful for this great city you let us live in, and this council, and the mayor, and all of the citizens. God, we just ask in 2024, today, this week, this month, this year, that you would guide us and lead us, that we would honor you, help us to have clarity and wisdom in the decisions that we make. And God, just thank you for the servants of our community, everybody that wants to make Opalika better so that you can be glorified. We love you, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have previously received a copy of the minutes of the May 21, 2024 council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additions, directions, any deletions, additions, or corrections? If none, they'll stand as presented. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to invite the McGlynn family to come join the down front, Shannon and Mike and Bryson.
No, that's, that's not a connection. He's a little.
You know, you're a TV star. And he looked just like he did on Fox. Whereas Bryson Cheese Curd McGlynn is one of 12 contestants on Fox's MasterChef Junior, competing for the chance to win $100,000, which premiered back on March the 4th. Bryson is a sixth grader at Opalika Spox Run School. He credits his love of cooking to his father. I notice they don't mention the mom.
I washed the dishes on the sushi.
Bryson began grilling alongside his dad, Mike, at the age of four and started competing in kids' Q barbecue when he was nine years old. Bryson began to share his love of cooking in early 2023 after breaking his arm. He began shooting cooking videos and shared them on social media, Cooking with Cheese Curd. His Facebook page amassed thousands of followers and attracted the attention of many food enthusiasts. He soon applied and was accepted to the ninth season of MasterChef Junior competition. Bryson's nickname Cheese Curd comes as a nod to his dad, Mike, who is nicknamed Cheese because he grew up in Wisconsin. And Bryson was the only Alabama contestant during season nine and the only contestant who specialized in grilling and barbecue. This young guy has brought great acclaim and honor, not only to his parents, Shannon and Mike, but to his school and to his community and citizens. It's been an amazing journey, Bryson, as we've watched you compete and advance during the season. A couple of times, I got a little nervous, man. But we're so proud of Bryson because just recently, he was named MasterChef Junior. and won that competition. So Bryson, we extend to you our sincere congratulations, and, uh, happy to accept this to you, and thank you for the way you've represented Opelika City students and your community. Uh, sign this the fourth day of June, two thousand twenty-four. Congratulations. Mike, any comments you want to make?
Uh, well, it, it was an honor to, uh, definitely to, uh, represent Opelika and Opelika City schools. We can't thank Dr. Seymour enough for everything that he did, and, uh, can't thank everything that Opelika's, Opelika's done.
Proud. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I borrow some money? Appreciate it.
That's pretty cool. All right, public hearings, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President, first item under public hearings is a demolition at thirteen hundred Spring Drive.
There's anyone that likes to speak for or against this issue to come to the podium to my left and do so at this time.
Hi, sorry. This is my first time here. I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
Please state your name and your address, please.
The address that we're talking about, or?
Your name and your address.
Okay, my name is Brittany Sandlin. My address is three oh three Lee Road, seven oh six Lot Seven.
Go ahead, tell us, tell us what you want to tell us.
I mean, I'm not, I tried to talk to the city man, Mr. Jeff, to see what I had to do to get it up to code, and he completely ignored my calls. So I'm just trying to understand how I could, and then every time we go into the property, Opelika Police Department comes and they serve my brother, um, trespassing on it. Even though the deed is one hundred percent in my name, he was just on the property. We're not allowed on the property to fix anything. Anytime we do, there's a threat of being arrested. But the city man's not communicating with me at all to tell me how I go about fixing it. I'm a, I'm, I'm a single mom of three, and I've put so much money into this house, and to just see it be tore down is kind of hard. And I'm wanting to see if you guys would be willing to work with me and give me time to get it up to date.
Do you have a plan?
I do. But we're not allowed, as far as I'm concerned, we're not allowed to go in the property without being the threat, being threatened to be arrested for trespassing. So I'm not sure how we can fix it if we're not allowed on the property.
Jeff.
She did come to my office. I spoke to her several times. I gave her liberty.
Come, come up to the podium, Jeff.
And I would also like to say I have videos of him, that he told me he would not be working with me, that his plan was to demolish it, and he would not be contacting me further. And I have that on video as well. You guys would like to see that.
Brittany did come to my office. I asked her.
I'm sorry.
And I spoke to you, my friend. Um, she had come to my office, and I asked her what her mailing address was. She wouldn't give it to me. I did issue her an us require repairs as per state of Alabama code. She refused to give me a mailing address, and I posted it on the front door. So she's aware of what needs to be done, which is quite extensive, and, uh, this house is missing floors. It's got electrical wires coming out the wall. It's very dangerous. Their ceiling's missing between the carport and the house. Uh, it's extensive damage, this house.
Thank you.
Uh, what, what came about as far as me not wanting to communicate was that at the time, she was not the owner. She had had to sign a quitclaim deed. I gave the notifications required by law to the owner, um, of record at the time, and then she produced a deed, which then I sent the information to her.
Questions?
What was the, Jeff, what, sorry, Jeff, what was the, the issue about her not being allowed on the property to fix these repairs?
There was a plaque that showed that it was dangerous. You cannot enter the structure at the time because it's dangerous. Uh, hazardous. She's got a list of required repairs. She could have got the permits she wished to before this. Uh, but it's very extensive damage, this house. It's going to be quite expensive to get it back to code.
So she's just, she needs to get a permit in order to begin work on it, if that's what she's choosing to do? Is that kind of the process?
Yeah, that's what the law allows it. The council's willing to approve.
I got you.
But I think, I think.
It is wide open. It's hazardous. You know, dangerous to children. Uh, there's wires up and we got to cut power off the house.
Mm-hmm.
So it's quite dangerous.
Thank you. The power was on until he called the electric company. I've never had no issues with my power. Until he called the electric company and had them to come out to put it on. My power and my water has been on since two thousand eleven. My, my, the issues is not my house. And then he came in there. The Opelika Police Officers served a warrant, for a search warrant, based on gunshots they heard in the neighborhood. They said my brothers did it. So they, they executed their search warrant. And then they invited Jeff in. I was not, I told Jeff from the beginning that I owned the home, that I would just finish paying for it, but we hadn't transferred the deed over. He refused to talk to me, even with the previous owner telling him it was my property. I mean, this whole issue, I, like, I don't know what I can do about it. But just taking my home because somebody heard a gunshot isn't right.
Can I point, just for clarification, do you live in the house?
It's, I don't live in the house. It's my home, though. I, I just finished paying. Yeah, we just finished remodeling the walls, and we just had an electrician come out and do all the can lights. So as far as electrical work, I'm not sure what he's talking about. But I can have the electrician send you guys a paper or whatever information you guys need.
So you are having work done to it now?
I am, and I was before they came in. I, I just finished paying it off a month before they came in. I didn't want to put work into something that I didn't have completely in my name yet.
Now, I don't want to take Jeff's nod for, but Jeff, is she having work done currently?
Uh, we're, and there were, the councils were exposed to a virus coming out of the panel. Their stickers were hung as a left and right. Like, we expect payment. We determine the left panel has been powered up.
Okay, the, the, um, are there others that they would like to address this? Okay, I declare a public hearing closed.
Thank you.
Mr. President, second item under public hearings is a weed abatement assessment for.
Eight fifteen, First Avenue.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone that likes to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare a public hearing closed.
Third item is a public hearing for weed abatement assessment at Four Avenue A.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone that likes to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare a public hearing closed.
Fourth and final public hearing is to amend the zoning ordinance for section seven point three C. This is district regu- regulations, use categories for the industrial district, it, or excuse me, institutional district.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone that likes to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare this public hearing closed. Uh, public comments, Mr. Jones.
Okay, now being the time if you'd like to address anything that's on the agenda, please come to the podium to my left. If you have not already done so, please sign into the signing sheet. Your name, cell phone number, email, so we can contact you if needed. Please state your name and your address if you speak, and keep it a three minutes or less. Ms. Mickel, this is for anything that's on the agenda.
Yep.
She'll find it.
I've heard some good things about some widening roads and stuff like that, which gives me a, a lot of joy.
Can you get her name and address?
Ev, you know where I am. Evelyn Mickel from one thousand three Glen Street, across the street from that library. But I have some concerns. I, I feel like we are going in the wrong direction, allowing all this building without a plan to get people moving. You cannot, that man that said he was on Tenth Street was just gonna put up one thing. He's got four down there, going all the way back to the radio, to the.
I, I, I'm sorry, Ms. Mickel. I'm sorry. What agenda item are we addressing?
Huh?
What agenda item are we addressing?
I don't know what I am.
Okay, would you please?
It says general business.
Would you please be seated, and we have another public comment time, when you can public comment about anything you like. But right now, we're doing just agenda items, so.
Which one?
The, at the very end of the thing, you get to come back.
Tell me where we are.
Well, we are on.
Number nine.
We're on number nine, and you're gonna be on number fifteen.
This is public information.
Well, it's not on the agenda. There's another, there's another agenda. Well, Ms. Mickel, would you please have a seat? Thank you. Thank you. Are there others? Thank, thank you. Are there others that would like to speak on an agenda-related item? Having none, we'll move on. General business, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President, first item under, and only item under general business is a request for a downtown street closure for a bourbon festival on October twelfth, two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rep.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Beds, Ms. Finley.
We're asking the council to approve a contract for uniform cleaning. The bid opening date was May the thirteenth. The bid was mailed to two vendors. One bid was received. Recommend the contract be awarded to downtown cleaners on their sole bid meeting specifications.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rep.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
We're asking the council to approve a contract for weed abatement services. The bid opening date was May the twentieth. The bid was mailed to sixteen vendors. One bid was received. Recommend the contract be awarded to Florida Terra on their sole bid meeting specifications.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rep.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
We're asking the council to approve a contract for accord street improvements. The bid opening date was May the twenty-first. The bid was mailed to fifteen vendors. Two bids were received. Recommend the bid be awarded to D and J Enterprises on their low bid meeting specifications in amount of one million four hundred, one thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion in seconds. Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rep.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolutions, Mr. Gunnar.
Uh, Mr. President, the first resolution approves travel expense reports submitted by the following persons. Mrs. Norris, Tyra Buchanan, Russell Jones, City Clerk, Lisa Harrison, uh, Planning, Kelly Smith of the Accounting Department, and Mayor Fuller.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Abstain.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rep.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Four ayes, one abstain.
The second resolution authorizes the mayor to dispose of three, three-phase transformers, which are surplus municipal, uh, personal property of the city of Opelika.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rep.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The third resolution authorizes the city to apply to the U.S. Department of Justice for a Patrick Leahy, uh, bulletproof vest partnership grant. The total purchase amount is forty-seven thousand, three hundred and ten dollars for these bulletproof vests. Uh, the city's portion will be twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, and the grant amount will be twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rep.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, resolution number four represents great news for the city of Opelika. Day One America Incorporated has announced plans for a major addition to its manufacturing plant in the Northeast Industrial Park, located at forty-six hundred North Park Drive. This project will include the construction of new buildings and additions to existing buildings, the purchase and acquisition of new manufacturing machinery, equipment, and other personal property, and the transfer of used equipment and personal property to the site. The total investment will be forty-six million, two hundred thousand dollars. This project will create one hundred new jobs. This resolution approves cer- certain tax abatements and exemptions for this Day One America project.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rep.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Mr. President, the first resol- the fifth resolution, um, approves a one-year extension to the existing contract between the city of Opelika and Valley Rescue Mission Incorporated for, uh, shelter for homeless persons.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion in three seconds. Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rep.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The sixth resolution is on the table, and the administration recommends that it remain on the table. This is a resolution, uh, to demolish the structure located at four oh one North Sixteenth Place. I believe from reading email traffic that, uh, Mr. Kappelman has scheduled a meeting next week, uh, to iron out, uh, all the problems involved with the rehabilitation and reconstruction of this building, and he will be meeting with the owner and the architect.
Pleasure to counsel to let that remain on the table. Okay.
Uh, resolution number seven was the subject of a public hearing this evening. This is a resolution ordering the demolition of the building located at thirteen hundred Spring Drive.
Is there a motion for approval?
I'd like to move to get this to the table. Pending further, uh, information gathering about potential plans to rehabilitate the building and just make sure that's all ironed out before, uh, and whether there, there is a plan or there isn't a plan before we make a decision.
Is that a motion?
Motion, please, yes.
Mr. President, if we can get it into discussion first before, can we table it after discussion?
Yeah, we need a motion to approve in a second.
Okay, uh, motion to.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a discussion.
Is, um, ma'am, is this something that you're currently working on? Or Jeff, is this something that we can approve tonight on the basis of three months? And then if that's done, then if you haven't put in the work to bring this up to at least the satisfaction that it would automatically be approved without having to come back to us? Can you use the microphone?
After he was told that, uh, after the city man told the police department that it was condemned, Opelika Police then arrested my brother, and they chopped the door down with the axes. So I'm, how do I go about, like, how do I fix something that I can't get into? Every time we're going to it, it's being arrested.
Well, if I may address, we are not here to discuss the police action for or against you or your brother, or whatever that is. What we're here to talk about is the condition of the house. And according to our professionals, the condition of the house is unlivable and needs to be torn down. And that's what the recommendation is. And so unless you can give us a plan that over the next ninety days, you can make that house livable. And so unless you can give us a plan that over the next ninety days, you can make that house livable, and we will continue to have inspections, then we need to move forward with the demolition.
Um, I can-
Because it's in a dangerous situation right now for other people that would be going in and out, or could be going in and out.
Okay, is there any way I can get longer than ninety days? Because he wants the garage separated from the house, and I need to car- like, I need to talk to multiple different groups of people to see how I do that.
Well, at the end of ninety days, if you are making significant progress, then we're gonna remove the dem- the demolition ordinance.
Okay, okay.
But without that, and we're gonna let our professional determine what significant progress is. So, that being the case, do you have a motion?
Well, I'd, I'd like to ha- have a comment, um, because my concern is the liability that, is the city of Opa- Lake, uh, held to any liability if someone enters that structure and become injured? Um, because you've already, you know, said that it's an unsafe structure because of, you know, the, the issues inside. Does the city of Opa- Lake incur any liability if we extend this? City attorney.
Well, I don't think it, the city incurs any liability if it's extended for the purpose of rehabilitating the, the property. I mean, that's the sole, either the, the building needs to be demolished, or it needs to be rehabilitated. And, you know, in order to be rehabilitated, the owner has to present a plan, which usually means hiring a contractor or someone to go in and, and bring the building up to code. It needs to meet all code standards. And so it's incumbent on the owner to present that plan to the city or the city council. So.
Was, was your brother, was he carrying any tools, or was he just go- what was he going, was he there for the purpose of-
Yes, he was cleaning it up. I got before and after pictures of when the police came first, and then he went later, like, three days later, and he was cleaning everything up. Like, that's all he was there for. That's the purpose he was there for. And it was during daylight hours. It wasn't him staying in the property or nothing. He was cleaning up. So we could get contractors to come in.
How long does it take for this to get bidded out for the process of destroy- demolition? How long is the bidding process?
Depends on the threshold. Needs to come out to city council who can request a bid. She has, uh, ten days to appeal to court, uh, for your decision. Pictures speak on themselves. It's clearly a dangerous structure.
That's a good, uh, that was, that's a good point. So if this doesn't get approved, sure, her appeal would be through the circuit court?
That's correct.
With all the pictures and probably better experience.
Now, normally, I don't think we want to deviate from what we've been doing all along. What we would do, we would go along with our professionals and are allowed to be put on the table, I mean, put up for demolition. And then that the professional, along with the mayor, would work with the client here to make sure that they are doing what they say they're doing. And if they don't do that within a reasonable time, then they're allowed to have it de- demolished. But that's what we normally do, and I don't think we're at a point where we want to start deviating from what we normally do.
I agree. So we have a motion and a second to allow demolition. Any other comments?
Um, I would just like to know, um, from our director, uh, Mr. Kappelman, hearing everything that you have heard today, is your recommendation still to move forward with the demolition? Thank you.
Other? Call roll, please.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Agent?
Aye.
Mr. Rout?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye to approve the demolition.
Resolution number eight approves a weed lien assessment in the amount of forty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents against the property located at eight fifteen First Avenue.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Agent?
Aye.
Mr. Rout?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number nine approves a weed lien assessment in the amount of one hundred sixty-four dollars and seven cents against the property located at four Avenue A.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Agent?
Aye.
Mr. Rout?
Aye.
Mr. En- Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number ten approves a special appropriation to Gims Empowered in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to help defray the expenses for the Juneteenth celebration.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Agent?
Aye.
Mr. Rout?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number eleven approves a special appropriation to envision Opa- Lake, uh, in the amount of eighty thousand dollars for additional renovations to the South Side Center for the Arts. Uh, this money will be applied to purchase and install new windows for the front of the building.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Agent?
Aye.
Mr. Rout?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, ordinances, Mr. Gunnar?
Mr. President, the first ordinance, uh, uh, is an ordinance that would end the policy of providing police funeral escort services.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Yes. I've had an opportunity to talk to many of the, uh, funeral, funeral home directors, and they want to do what's best for Opa- Lake as well. But they also want to see if there may be an alternative, or way to help the funeral directors and director, that people to inform the church or home to the cemetery. And I think if we, if I'm in order, I'd like to make a motion to table it until such discussions are being made.
There is a motion to, uh, table. Is there a second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Agent?
Aye.
Mr. Rout?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye to table.
Uh, res- uh, ordinance number two is an ordinance to amend the text of the zoning ordinance of the city of Opa- Lake to change the uses allowed in the institutional district. This ordinance comes to the council with a positive recommendation from the Opa- Lake Planning Commission.
As for amendment to councils to introduce this ordinance?
Granted.
Mr. Allen, thank you.
Ordinance number three approves the annexation of forty-eight acres located at twenty fifty-one Alabama Highway one sixty-nine into the corporate limits of the city of Opa- Lake. This, uh, ordinance comes with a positive recommendation from the Opa- Lake Planning Commission.
As for amendment to council to introduce this ordinance?
My pleasure.
Ms. Norris, thank you for doing so. Uh, no other ordinances, appointments, uh, Mr. Jones, the second roster of public comment.
And all these times we like speaking to the council about, do you think, well, things come to podiums to my left, station at your address, sign into the signing sheet, I did, bring it through.
Evelyn Mickel, one thousand three Glen Street, about a week, a wa- uh, uh, two blocks from here. Anyway, I'm going back to my thing. I'm really pleased to hear that some, s- some stuff is getting done about the traffic. I am concerned about some other things. And I want to know that we have a true plan. Of course, they're tearing down Western Sizlin, and they're going to build another gasoline. Now, I know I don't have anything over that, but have you considered the traffic? We already have a backup this way and this way, and we can't do anything about the lights over the interstate because that's federal. We've got to have a plan. If they're gonna have another, another, uh, thing that's going to pull ch- ch- pe- more char- yeah, more sh- yeah, excuse me.
Traffic.
More traffic in this area. Now you're gonna go up, they're putting that going up to, are you gonna widen the road going up to, uh, where it joins in to go across, maybe to even, uh, to McCoy Street?
Oh, to my knowledge, there is no, has not been any approval for any-
Well, if you're gonna-
Gas station or whatever.
If you're gonna do something with McCoy Street, you've got to have a plan. I'm just saying. I drive that road.
Well, Ms. Mickel, did you, did you miss the earlier conversation?
I, I li- I listened. I, I tried to, I'd like to have a copy, just so I can have some peace and quiet in my heart. I mean, I'm sorry, but my ha- my, my house is right one blo- one lot away from Indianapolis five hundred. I hear trucks at eight thirty at night. I hear motorcycles. I feel like my whole thing has been ruined. I can't even sit on my front porch and have my, a quiet time and some coffee without traffic, without hearing traffic. You have cut down trees that we're supposed to be the tree country, 'cause that's what our, our loved, uh, mayor said when he was planting trees right there where the, uh, new, uh, library is. And I can hear the interstate. I couldn't end it, hear the interstate forty-one years ago. That the building on, on Tenth Street, we're still having trouble? To me, it should have made a whole lot more sense to widen the street before he started building.
Your time is up.
I know my time's up, but I'm gonna say.
No, you're gonna be, you're gonna be-
Can I have another time?
No, ma'am. I'm sorry. You may sit down. Well, you ain't gotta go home. You're welcome to stay. So noted.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jaqueta Ward. I'm the founder of Gims Empowered. It's been a while since I've been here, and so I just wanted to come in and personally thank city council and Mayor Fuller for just the years of support with the Opa- Lake Juneteenth Celebration. Um, the tremendous way that it's grown. I'm just so proud of it. So I just want to make sure that I personally came to thank you guys for all of your support. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Kevin Luntzford. My address is four zero zero six Stratford Way. And my family, me, chose to move here ten years ago. Um, actually moved into the city limits about three years ago. And when I say we chose to live here, we had other options. Um, but we saw Opa- Lake and the infrastructure, the, um, jobs y'all were creating through industry, um, the public spaces for families to do stuff. We chose Opa- Lake. So, first of all, this, I want to just say thank you, 'cause I know you are a big part of that success of this, making this a thriving community to live in. And we chose to live here, and just want to let you know you're part of that, and what you do matters to us. Um, second of all, just want to let you know, personally, I have volunteered, been part of ministries that helped homeless families and low-income families for probably twenty-plus years now. And moving here, I've also done that, but recently, I joined an organization called Circles of Opa- Lake, and I know that y'all have worked with them in the past, and when I joined with Circles, I was made aware that the poverty rate in Opa- Lake City is actually just above seventeen percent, which is above the state average and above the national average. And, uh, we do, we have a beautiful city here, um, but we have to be aware of that bottom part of our community. And I just wanted to spend a minute being an advocate for those in poverty in our community, um, saying that Circles of Opa- Lake, we are gonna combat it. We're gonna do our part, and, uh, I am excited to work with each of you over the next months and years, um, to come together and let's get this below seventeen percent. And trying to think of what, what could that mean? I think, you know, seventeen percent is seventeen percent of your constituents, um, people that you represent. And, um, I know there's a lot on your plate, and y'all do a lot of good work and have to focus on a lot of different things. So for me, I was like, what's fair? What's a, what's a number to shoot for to, to, to focus on poverty? And I said, well, it's seventeen percent of our constituents, so look, maybe about seventeen percent of our time and our communication and our, our time together needs to be spent really focused on that constituency, and let's get that number down. Because it's a beautiful place to live, and I want it to be that way for everyone. Thank you for, for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Patty Quinn. I live at eight one five Sixth Avenue, and I watched the planning meeting committee meeting the other night, um, on, I watched it. And I was a little disturbed. I live in the historic district, and I'm addressing the Renfro House, which we're all kind of tired of listening to. But I asked myself, why and how did we get here? What are we gonna do now? And then what's yet to come? So I'm disturbed, I, at the fact of several things. One is, I totally respect that there is a difference of opinion from people, and it, I think it's healthy and wonderful. I am concerned about the opposition to the Renfro House and some of the techniques that have been done. It's, um, we have a neighborhood that has been, uh, riddled with misinformation, fear. Um, I think a lot of the things about the Kovacs have been personally, and Jonathan personally, um, targeted. They are going around telling them in our neighborhood that they're liars, they're not gonna do what they say they're gonna do. I, I remember the first meeting we had, and we had a wonderful group of people here, and there were so many people here supporting the Renfro House, and they still support the Renfro House. We were all very excited about seeing it renovated, lights going up, life coming into the Renfro House, and somehow now it's being portrayed as the animal house. It fraternity parties, keg parties, public urination, parked cars, it's gonna be all over the place, and that's just not true. It's not gonna be the event center like the Bottling Company. I would compare it to the Heritage House, who, by the way, has been a wonderful neighbor, and we so enjoy. I personally love seeing activity at the Heritage House, a tent going up and a wedding going on. It means they're doing good. They're gonna make it. They're gonna prosper. They're gonna be part of the community. So I'm just, I'm just really alarmed that I want y'all to know, there's more than one opinion. But I think the people that are for the Renfro House, and I love the people that are in opposition, they're my neighbors. I gotta love them, right? But we're respecting the process. You present your side, we present their side. Not once, they have weekly meetings about strategy on how to, they've even created a website that's attacked, um, the Renfro House and pushed their agenda. But I, there's a lot of other people that are for it. So what I'm saying is, what now? You have a decision to make. That decision is gonna make a direction. It's not only gonna affect the Renfro House, it's gonna affect that whole property.
I'm sorry, Ms. Quinn.
And then it's gonna affect the destiny. So my thought is-
Ms. Quinn, I'm sorry, your time's up.
I know, but I hope that y'all will consider the whole thing, and that there's a vision for this city, and that you look beyond the fear and really look to what the vision is. And by the way, just on a personal note, I love the, the police escort of the funerals. I come from a community where they would run you over if you're, if you're not in- I come from a community where they would run you over if you're, if you're not in, if your car's in the way. And when we moved here, I so respected the fact that people pulled over and let cars go through and the police escort.
I'm sorry, Ms. Quinn.
I think it's wonderful.
Uh, than- thank you.
Thank you.
Others?
I want to go last.
I don't know if you're last, but you can go.
I go. Uh, to the mayor again, in his absence, city council and other Opa-licka officials. I'm Billy U. Allen. I live at nine thirty Red Antress, Stone Mountain, Georgia. I just want to make this perfectly clear to you guys. Everything that I do, everything that I say is to make Opa-licka and to keep Opa-licka as the best city in Lee County. That's what I want to make sure happens and stay that way, that Opa-licka is the best city in Lee County. Now, during the twenty-twenty election for mayor, city council, I recorded thirty-two issues and concerns that the people that were running for office said was important for this city to be the best city in Lee County. Thirty-two things here. I didn't say them. I didn't say anything the people running for office said. What I'm gonna do, I'm continuing to come up here between now and next August, which will be the election for mayor and city council, and I'm gonna talk about all thirty-two things on this list. Now, I've already spoken about a couple of them, but the gentleman tonight spoke about something tonight also, the poverty rate here in Opa-licka. Seventeen percent? On my list, it was around nineteen percent, and the state was fifteen percent. That's something we can do and work on. I didn't say it. The politicians that ran for office said it. I'm gonna talk about all these things at every forum, city council meeting, so we can be the best city in Lee County. Now, two other things on this list that I spoke about several times. Urban forest, wild animals in, in neighborhoods, blighted and neglected properties. We need to hold all those property owners accountable to clean up these neighborhoods in Opa-licka. All wars. And I want to make, yep, and assist to make Opa-licka the best city in Lee County for all residents and citizens. That's my goal. I'm gonna work on it from now to August twenty-twenty-five. Good luck, sir. Thank you very much.
Are there others? The character trait of the month is cooperation, the process of working together to the same end. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
We have a motion and a second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.